Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have two exemplary people in the room, and Joe, you want to introduce them, please?
Absolutely, and I'm glad everybody came for our two exemplary people. We are very fortunate tonight to introduce our parent educator of the year and our teacher of the year. First, I want to start with our parent educator of the year, Heidi Lakioma. First, I want to thank Jen Parcell and Sheila Casinelli, who decided to initiate Monroe's Parent Educator of the Year program. Since this is the first year of the program, I think it's extra special that Heidi Lakioma was selected out of all the parent educators in the district. Heidi started working at Monroe in 2003 and has spent most of her career supporting the 5th grade team at Stepney Elementary School. She is described by her colleagues as going above and beyond in everything she does, and judging by the reception she received from her team last year, her students absolutely adore her. I'm proud to introduce Heidi Lakioma as Monroe's first and the 2324 Monroe Public Schools' Parent Educator of the Year.
Thank you, congratulations.
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce Mary Ann Bortfield, who started teaching at Monroe in 2007. Mary Ann has taught 2nd grade and 1st grade before her current assignment as a kindergarten teacher at Fawn Hollow Elementary School. Mary Ann was chosen out of 100 teachers who received 159 nominations for Teacher of the Year this year. She has been, she was acknowledged for being responsive to the needs of her students, families, and colleagues. One parent said that she always makes herself available, constantly communicating with parents beyond the call of duty. Her principal, Lee Ansis, says that she always leaves Mary Ann's rooms feeling inspired and that there's just something special about the way she's able to connect with every learner every year. I've had the opportunity to visit Mary Ann's classroom, and I know exactly what Lee's talking about. It's my pleasure to introduce Monroe's 2324 Teacher of the Year, Mary Ann Bortfield.
Okay, thank you, Joe. We're going to move on to public participation. I understand that several people are here to speak about a particular concern. I want to inform everyone of Board of Education Policy 1120, which is the policy that guides public participation at board meetings. The board will dedicate up to 20 minutes for public comment. Up to three minutes per speaker is allotted. If you hear the timer go off, please finish your sentence and end. All persons except students wishing to address the board shall give their name and address. Student speakers should state their name only. Discussion of a specific school system employee or student is not allowed in a disparaging or negative manner. You may compliment but not make complaints about specific employees or students at public participation. There is a different process for that. Questions and/or comments may be restricted by the board chair. It should not be the expectation that Board of Education members will respond to comments or questions offered during public participation. Specific questions pertaining to the district may be forwarded directly to the superintendent of schools as appropriate outside of the meeting. I would suggest that if a number of people plan to speak on the same specific point, that you identify one or two speakers to speak on that group's behalf. This will allow others to participate tonight. Those unable to speak tonight are welcome to submit email comments to the board via the district website. I want to assure you that all emails are read, considered, and made part of any applicable record. The Board of Education cannot legally discuss personnel matters. When concerns are brought to the board's attention, we are obligated to follow policy and law which dictate a process that must be followed, cannot be interrupted, and which is completed as quickly but as thoroughly as possible. The August Board of Education meeting was canceled not due to public pressure, as rumored, but because for the last several years has always been canceled for the summer break. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak on an issue other than football? Okay, sir, you may come up. Please have a seat there. Sheila, can you move that microphone over for him, please? Sir, did you sign up?
I did. I signed up on the website.
Your first name?
Nick Precy, 48 Chalk Hill Road.
Oh, I have you.
And you were there, right?
Okay. Go ahead, sir. You just stated your name and address for the record, so go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. As I said, I'm a Monroe resident. I have been here for about a decade. My wife and I live on Chalk Hill with our two children. One of my children attends Fawn Hollow Elementary School. She takes bus number 3, provided by, obviously, the board and All-Star Transportation, which picks her up on the corner of Chalk Hill Road and Jockey Hollow Road. Just to paint a picture of Jock Hill and Jockey Hollow, earlier today, in about a 10- to 15-minute span, there were between 7 and 10 cars that did not comply with a three-way stop that's over there. So, on August 19th, I called the All-Star Transportation Company and asked the gentleman the following question: Why do my children not receive in-front-of-home bus drop-off and pickup as other families in Monroe do? The answer I was provided was that there is a, by the Board of Ed, again, this is what I've been relaying, so I'm relaying it here, that there is a no cul-de-sac policy. If you're not familiar with Chalk Hill, it's a cul-de-sac off of Jockey Hollow, right near the schools. And that because I live on a cul-de-sac, I'm not eligible to receive in-front-of-home service like the other families on our bus route. And if I wanted to, I could come here, which I'm doing, and kind of requesting that. So, my first question is, what is the policy? Is there a policy for a cul-de-sac? Again, I don't know this officially. I tried to look it up on your website or wherever your statutes are, and I didn't find anything. And then, secondly, how soon can I get bus service in front of my house? So, that's what I've got. So, is there a back-and-forth here?
No, sir.
All right, so let me cut to the chase then, right? I have some data on cul-de-sacs. That bus, I was unsure that that didn't ring true with me, so I followed the bus. I noticed that it does do cul-de-sac service, that exact bus, my daughter's bus, on Kimberly Drive. And then, I confirmed with other families in town that there is a cul-de-sac drop-off for Stephanie Elementary families, specifically Hannah Lane. And then, lastly, I was told by the fellow at All-Star Transportation that there was no bus service on Chalk Hill Road, period. I had informed them that my neighbor across the street, who was the Massey High School class president of 2022, 2023, I witnessed him get picked up and dropped off as he was a child growing up on that road. So, that's my statement. I don't know what the next steps here are, the rules of engagement, but I found it necessary for my daughter and the other children. So, it's not just me. There are other families. We are growing. That was a busy kids' school, street, then nobody, and now all of our kids are growing up. So, we've got that next cycle of Monroe Public School children. Thank you for your time. I don't know what the next steps are, but I'll look forward to it.
Somebody will reach out to you.
Somebody will reach out to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, all right. Good luck with the football, guys.
Is Melissa here?
Brownville.
Brownville, yes. Hi, good evening. Come on up. You stated your name. Can you state your address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes?
Melissa Brownville, 53 Harvester Road. Team first is a phrase you're going to see on all of our football teams' practice and season training wear. Team first means you're part of something bigger than yourself. Team first also means that you celebrate wins and losses together as a team. Team first means you support each other's strengths and help overcome each other's weaknesses. Team first means a brotherhood. Team first is what it means to be on a team, this particular team. This is what Coach Steve Christie brought to this team. This is what Coach Eric Giordano manifests in these young men every day. Our head coaches support these athletes offseason, during season, running week-to-day lifts to keep these gentlemen in shape, lead them through weightlifting competitions offseason, which they are very proud to partake in. They run passing leaves during offseason to better their team and to hone their offensive skills, which they typically dominate. These coaches support these young men in their collegiate preparations. They help them be seen by coaches, which they have created relationships with, to assist these young men in furthering their football careers. Coach Giordano is a Massey alum that supports the community by trying to use and integrate other alums into the program through coaching opportunities and as our vendors and supporters. Coach Giordano is fully vested in this team, school, and community, and not to mention, he is a tenured educator here at Massey. I am not as familiar with Coach Christie, but what I do know is these boys buy into Coach Christie. They support him in every way possible. They listen to what he has to say. They appreciate his comments. He makes them better players. He makes them better people. Coach Christie, junior class, the class of 2025, have been with him through most of their Lions' careers, probably since they were about 10 years old, if not younger. The parents of these children, including those who are against him at this time, have lobbied Steve to be appointed as our Massey Football Head Coach in 2021. I, as a parent, have never witnessed any abusive language, mistreatment of players, or forcing any players to play when they are injured. These boys are encouraged to be inclusive to all team members in the form of brotherhood and to support one another. These coaches instill that being good at your position takes a lot of hard work and discipline, and hard work and discipline begets great results. You will get nowhere without it. The commitment of these coaches goes way beyond just playing season. No one's here to win any accolades, and they're just here to build a great team and make great young men. Team first are not just words on a shirt to them. This, excuse me, this board took the path of least resistance, we feel, by hiring an outside lawyer at the expense of all of us. This investigation process should have been much more expedicious, and the accusations should have been found concrete before acting on such allegations. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mark and Diana Champagne? Hi, good evening. I ask you to come up together, as with other people that have signed up, so that, in the interest of time, we can get more people in, hopefully, okay?
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Diana Champagne, 2 Lazy Brook Road.
Mark Champagne, 2 Lazy Brook Road. We're here today to express our unwavering support for Coach Christie and Coach Giordano. We have two boys who have been involved in football since they were four years old, and they've benefited from their experience with coaching and with teaching from both Coach Giordano and Coach Christie. Their guidance and their mentorship to my two boys over the years has been invaluable, and we're just, we've been completely impressed from day one in meeting them with the amount of time that they invest into these kids, teaching them football, teaching them sportsmanship, teaching them what teamwork is about, and putting in the work and the effort that you need to be successful. I think the record that they've shown, especially in the high school, which my one son is a senior, he's been playing for them for three years now. Their record is, it speaks for itself. We're making runs deep into state playoffs for the last three years, and I think that's a testament to how much effort and hard work these two coaches put into these kids. Team first is the mantra. We all know it. These boys all know it. They all believe in it. And I think it's a very important thing. And unfortunately, I think for the minority of people that have come forward to complain against these two men, the theory of team first is lost on them. They're only interested in benefiting themselves, and they've endeared themselves to these coaches only to try to benefit from them on a personal level. They don't know anything about what team first means, but look behind you. Look at all these people that are here today to support these coaches. That's a testament to who these men are and what they mean. Their character and everything that they do for these kids, there's nothing that we have ever seen in either Coach Giordano or Coach Christie as coaches and as a teacher for Coach Giordano. We've not seen anything ever that would make us doubt that our children being around those men is going to harm them or hurt them in any way. And our experience has only been positive 100%. We'll yield back anytime we might have remaining.
I just really want to add really quickly, though. Steve has been in this country, this town, this community for over 30 years, and he's dedicated his life to these kids. Not to ours now, but throughout, I mean, there's kids that have been here, have been with him before. He doesn't deserve what's been going on. He is now a hostage in his own home. He can't go out in the community. Giordano, he is an amazing person. He has people that have selected the class just to be in his class. It's not just about football. These people have an impact to the community and to our student body, and I think it's really sad that we're going through this right now.
Thank you very much. Anthony and Lynn Bakarella? Hi, if you can state your name and address for the record, go ahead.
Anthony Bakarella, 77 Lynn Drive.
Leonard Bakarella, 101 Lynn Drive.
I'll go first. I'll try to make it quick. These are not two people that should have together three minutes. I've been in this town for a long time. I grew up here. I've known Steve since I'm five years old. Steve Christie's been a coach in this community for over 25 years. I've heard people start talking about the wins and the records. Look back at the track record. You can look at the Monroe Lions. You can look at the championships. You can look at Harding going to the playoffs. You can look at Stratford having success, and you can look at Massey having success, and none of that actually matters. The wins don't matter. The championship doesn't matter. The love that those kids, that these guys behind me have for Coach Christie, is what matters. That's legacy. That's football. I'm 35 years old. I have twin girls at home. I could put them to bed. I simply came here because I love this program. I sweat. I bled in this program behind me. And what we're doing to those guys back there is a disgrace, to take away two guys who are supposed to be part of there every day. They're here to make those boys men. I've got news for you. This game, you're going to be coached hard. You are supposed to uphold a standard and do your job, and when you don't do your job, your coach is going to tell you you didn't do it. And I've got news for you. At 15, 16, 17 years old, it might hurt your feelings, but you can do two things. You can quit. You can cry, whine, and complain, or you can simply get better. For the guys that quit, they're going to grow up and continue to complain. They're going to grow up and continue to quit. They're going to be bad husbands, bad fathers, and broke. And for the guys that do the right thing and get better, they're going to be the ones that succeed. They're going to be the ones that show up for somebody who's wrongly accused or can't stand up for himself. That's all I have to say. I know my dad's got a lot to say.
Anthony, well said. Very well said. Guys, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I've known Steve Christie for over 30 years. He's my best friend. I've coached with him. I've played baseball with him. I've played football with him. I've played softball with him. I don't think there's anyone in this room that knows Steve Christie better than I. I'm not special, but I will tell you this. It will be a disservice to these young men to remove him and deny him to coach. He exemplifies what a coach is all about. And let's talk about what a coach is all about. A coach isn't about football, baseball, basketball. That's not their deal. When I coached, and Steve and I have the same philosophy, it's about holding young men, young boys, and turning them into young men. And how do you do that? You do that by the failures of the parents to accept their children. And I'm a parent, and I've failed many times. Because when you think with your heart and you act with your heart, you're enabling your child, and you'll fail. It is outside the family for someone that's in athletics. Will not go to a teacher for advice. They're going to go to their coach. And as a coach, we have to instill certain things for these children, which is discipline, which is respect, which is integrity, and most of all, accountability.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not done.
I have to stop you there, sir.
Well, I'm going to get one more sentence in here.
Go one more sentence.
Once again, it would be a tremendous disservice to put Steve Christie and Coach G out for the season. And if that's the case, shame on this board.
Thank you very much. Nicole Conti? Hi, Nicole. Name and address for the record? Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Nicole Conti, 78 Lantern Drive. Midsummer this year, Massey Football families were made vaguely aware of reasoning behind our head coach, Steve Christie, and associate head coach, Eric Giordano, being placed on administrative leave. We are now on day 64 of what is being referred to as an investigation into the culture of our team. Prior to this communication, Massey High School conducted a full and thorough investigation into these culture claims. They came up with absolutely no evidence. We can find in the Code of Ethics for the Board of Education, this, Article 17. I will refer all complaints through the proper chain of command within the system and will act on such complaints at public meetings only when administrative solutions fail. After accusations of a hostile and intimidating culture were brought to the Board of Education, letter upon letter of evidence to the contrary was subsequently provided to the Board of Education, as well as the investigator handling this matter. These letters came from captains spanning the past two years, families, Massey Football Program members, a broad and unbiased sampling of the Monroe community to speak to the facts of the Massey Football Program. While we had expected the Board of Education to find value in this feedback, we instead find ourselves questioning the process. We find ourselves having to assemble here today to know certainly our voices have been heard and understood. The Board of Education is intended to serve all of the students of Monroe fairly. My son and his teammates are the only victims to be found. It is not the culture of their beloved sport to blame. Their season has been disrupted, a shadow cast on the program. The Board of Education took the path of least resistance by hiring outside counsel at the expense of all of us. This was done, and the Board of Education never interviewed Coach Christie or Coach Giordano. As it stands today, the investigator has not interviewed Coach Christie or Coach Giordano either. This investigation has been compromised. Friday night is our season-opening game. Our head coach and our associate head coach belong on that field with their team. Massey High School deserves one of its finest educators, Eric Giordano, to be brought back into the classroom to teach. Thank you for wanting to keep our children safe and for taking allegations seriously, but now, please allow our program, our children, and our coaches to carry on and heal from this time of needless defamation.
Thank you. Anthony Marciano? Hi, Anthony. Hi, go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
Anthony Marciano, 29 Pat Marshall Court, Monroe, Connecticut. I wanted to come today and speak to you guys just to let you know, you know, my experience and my family's experience with Coach G and Coach Christie. And you'd have to know that, you know, before we got there, my son David had a horrible experience at sports, you know, with another coach. Another sport, soccer, you know. It was horrible. It was the worst. And, you know, we didn't know if we'd ever want to play sports again, but then he got to, he got to Christie and to football. And since then, the change in my son was, he became a better kid, a better son, a better friend. He had like two friends when we got there, and he had 42 brothers when we left. And this came from what he learned, which was team first and being responsible, being accountable. We were having trouble at school. He became such a different kid. And I credit that to what he learned from Coach Christie. And Coach D, he speaks very highly about too. I don't know him as well as I do Christie. But that man has meant so much to my family and to my son, and I'll never, ever forget it. And to speak to him as a man for a minute, I got, I was let go a couple of, from my job several years ago, and David was doing his football camp with Christie, and it was at another place called InSports. And, you know, it was a little bit pricey. So, Christie got word to me through the grapevine. I went to see him, and he called me, and he had me come over. And he said, "Look, I want you to send David here. Don't worry about the money." And I was like, "No, Coach, you can't do it. This is your business." He said, "No, that's what families do, and that's what we are. We're family." Coach Christie is a maker of men, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Is the board okay? I have two more people signed up. Is the board okay with two more people, even though we've hit the limit, and then we'll move forward with the meeting?
Yeah.
I like to do that. Okay, then, thank you. Bill Romanella? Did I say that right?
Yep.
Hi, Bill. How are you? State your name and address for the record, and go ahead.
Bill Romanella, 44 Mustang Drive, Monroe. Well said. All right. I'm just going to share my story. I was nine years old. Steve Christie was my first coach. Coached with my father, who's also sitting here today. Taught me life lessons that I'll never forget. Get up to Massey. I'm nobody. Sophomore year on the defensive line. Played from 2004 to 2008. Coach G, Coach Giordano, saw something in me. End up going all-conference, all-conference the next year, all-state. Get a scholarship to play at the next level. That right there is my story. There's other people behind me that have that similar story. That doesn't happen. My path doesn't happen without the leadership of those two men. Coach Giordano is a mentor to this day. I just gave birth to my daughter two weeks ago. He has three of them, and I look to him for advice, even to this day. I'm 33 years old. Scott Christie, one of my groomsmen, he's sitting here today. I've spent countless hours at their house around Steve. He's been a mentor of mine for all these years, and I look for him for advice as well. These people are great men, like everyone else said. They make boys into men, and I am here to prove that. I'm successful. I own a home. I have a wife. I don't know if any of that happens, if that day, Coach Giordano picked me up and said, "I see something in you, and I'm going to give it to you. I'm going to give you my all," and mentored me from this day on. That's all. That's my story.
Thank you very much. Valera Cornish? Is that correctly? Is she here? Last name Cornish, C-O-R-I-S-H? No? Oh, yes, okay. Hi, state your name and address for the record, and go ahead.
Hi, Valerie Akorish, 80 Ripton Ridge. And Stephen is a, he is my brother-in-law. I basically grew up with him. He just gives everything. I know how hard he works and how important he is to the kids. I know how hard he works and how important he is to the kids. He means a lot to them. And the paths that, you know, and it's true, just like the person before me said, if you don't have that, those important people in your path, in your life, you may take another path. And Stephen is, he's always been like so involved with sports, even as a kid. And, you know, his sons, he coached, and he's just, he's an amazing dad and, and coach. And I just would hate to see this program lose him. It's just, it's very important to the community. And I think, I hope, hopefully, whatever these issues are and these problems, they can be solved. And they can move on because now you've got a game on Friday and he's not available. So I'm hoping that this can resolve itself. We are all here in support of him. And like I said, it's, Monroe is an amazing community. Stephen's lived here, basically, you know, raised his kids here, and now I live here and my daughter. And it's, it is, it's a wonderful community. And I just, I don't understand what the issues are, but there has to be, there has to be a solution. And, you know, with all the support, you just really have to see, like, like how important this is to keep these two men. I don't know Coach G, but to me, they are, you know, a pillar in the society for the kids and for the families because they are just very involved. And, you know, like I said, I'm just hoping that this can be resolved.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate you coming here tonight and sharing your opinions and your concerns. I'm going to move forward with the meeting, and we appreciate your respectfulness through this participation tonight, too. So, thank you.
Excuse me. I have time, but I have like two minutes to give you a minute.
Is the board okay with that? We're like way over our time?
I think you guys have twenty.
One. Come on up.
One minute, yeah.
This will be the last speaker, but please state your name and address for the record.
Felicia Anzalone, 88 Downs Row. This investigation started on July 6th. The football season is already well underway, and now classes are back in session, and we have no answer or clarity as to what is going on. I'm afraid we are running out of time. Out of time for the kids who need the program more than the program needs the kids. My name is Felicia Anzalone, and Coach G saved my life my freshman year. I entered freshman year of high school with uncertainties at home. My life felt like it was falling apart around me. I chose to venture down a wrong path. I look at Mr. Cobza, because he was the dean of students at that time. So, I was Mr. Cobza's problem at that time. My only constant in life was my sport. It was the only structure I cared about. It was my safe place. Because I was failing at school, the administration began planning to move me to alternative education program located outside of Masick. In the event I was sent to alternative, I would no longer be allowed to cheer. It was the man being accused of "we still don't know what," Eric Giordano, who said, "If you take away her sport, you will have nothing left to live for." And so my coach Jackie Giordano came up with a plan to keep me at Masick and hold me accountable. Coach Giordano's statement was 100% accurate. If I lost cheer, I would have lost everything. Coach G saved me. I went on to receive the Superintendent Intendant Award my senior year, as I was a freshman who didn't stand a chance and yet found her way to make a total turnaround in her academics and her life. Without Coach G speaking for me and helping to keep me accountable, I would not have made it to my senior year. Coach G doesn't just show up to school or show up to practice, and neither does Coach Christie. These two men go home thinking about their students and their athletes. They have made it their mission to teach them, to guide them, and to give them a safe place to come to. I graduated high school 12 years ago. I am not alone in saying I can pick up the phone and call Coach G tomorrow and he would still be there for me as if it was my freshman year. If the investigator would like to speak with current or former athletes, we would be happy to provide them with statements from former athletes or current athletes. These kids deserve their teacher back. They deserve their coaches back. Some kids need this program more than the program needs the kids. I'm asking to keep these kids' needs at the forefront of this investigation, to speed up the investigation, and to restore the certainty of the program and the school. The Masick High School students and athletes deserve to have the confidence in their education and their sports. Mr. Cobza can vouch for my story.
Everyone can stay or you can feel free to go. We're going to continue on with the meeting. Sir, we're continuing with the meeting. Thank you.
We have one last question.
Sir, we're continuing with the meeting. I'm moving on to the report of the chairman. Sir, you're disturbing the meeting now. I'm going to ask you to please sit down or leave. Okay? I don't have a report of the chairman, so we're going to move on. Sir, are you going to leave or do the police officers have to make you leave?
No, I'm going to leave after my question.
No, you're done. You're done.
When is the process?
Good night, sir.
Happen, and when is the decision going to be made?
Good night, sir.
That's what we want to know.
I do not have a report of the chair. Good night. Officers, can you remove this gentleman here? He's disturbing a public meeting.
Why are you going to come up with a timeframe of what?
Good night, everybody.
I gotta, I gotta change to the minutes.
Hold on one second. Ladies and gentlemen, you can stay for the rest of the meeting or you can leave. It's up to you. It's a public meeting.
It's not a public meeting if you can't ask questions.
I do not have a report of the chair. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Dennis, you have a question about the minutes?
Yeah, the minutes state that I wasn't here for the executive session.
Hold on one second. For the sake of noise, Dennis, I just want to let things calm down.
I got you. Totally understand.
Yeah. Dennis, go ahead.
I'd like to revise the minutes. I was actually here for the executive session. It says I was via phone, but I was in person.
Oh, that's right.
For the special meeting on July 5th?
Correct.
Okay. So noted? Any other questions or comments on the minutes? No, hearing none. We're going to move forward. Any comments or questions on the approval of warrants and wires from anyone? Okay, hearing none. Joe, you want to talk about some new hires?
Yep. We are, we are fully staffed. I know, I was talking to a few people beforehand.
That's great.
A much fortunate, much more fortunate situation than a lot of other, a lot of other folks in other, in other districts that were fully staffed. All of our new hires will be at our next meeting.
Okay. Okay, great. Any questions on hires? No? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change to the minutes that Dennis added in?
Motion approved.
Jerry, seconded by Jeff, all in favor? Aye, consent agenda passed. Thank you. Reports of the committees? Welcome our student reps back. Come on down and tell us how the start of the year is going.
Good evening, Monroe Board of Education and others. The year is off to a fast start as all students transitioned from the welcome half-days towards the remainder of the school year. The Wingman Program met today during flex to plan for their involvement in the Masick Rise Program for our new freshman class. The program will begin this Friday and continue onward during the remainder of the school year.
Tomorrow is a half-day as it is back-to-school night. Mr. Swenson and Mr. Lowell will be hosting a barbecue for the seniors right after school. As for sports, Friday is the first football game away at Killingly. Also on Friday, home at Masick, field hockey will be playing Daniel Hand. Boys soccer will have their first game next Tuesday. Girls volleyball has their first game Thursday, and girls soccer has their first game Saturday. Boys golf already had their first match against Joe Barlow and won. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any committee reports from board members at all? I know we just started.
Yeah, I have CES Thursday, so I'll have one for you next time.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to our report of the superintendent. Joe?
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to bat out of order a little bit here. I'm going to start with the summer work update and then go, then go into the convocation and then use it as a segue to introduce our principals who are here to talk about the opening. It was really busy. It was really nice that we got out as early as we did. Definitely gave the custodial staff a lot of time to get a jump on the work that needed to be done over here. I really can't thank Dan Krosick and his staff enough for all the work they did to get our schools in the shape that it was in when we welcomed students and staff back. District-wide, we had the typical summer routine, cleaning, stripping, waxing floors, painting as needed, striping the driveways. All of our playgrounds and gymnasiums have their safety inspections and preventative maintenance work done, and there was tree work done all over the district. At Masick, we were able to pick two items off the capital, the capital list. In the pool filter, that project was finished, and the septic pipe, which turned out to be a little bit more work than we originally bargained for when they found an additional septic tank out there. If you came in the north driveway today, I hope you slowed down for the speed bumps. Those are new. If you're leaving that way, slow down, too, because there's one right at the gate as you, as you pull out, too. So, that's just to help with our security here at the high school. They did a nice job refinishing the gym floors here as well. Jackie Hollow, I know I notified this board over the summer that we added a number of air conditioners. Still dealing with heat around the district, as you may have seen. If not, we just called for early dismissals for tomorrow and Thursday, just because of the combination of today's heat with tomorrow's increasing heat and increasing humidity. Tomorrow and Thursday are supposed to be the two worst days, so hopefully we get through that. Lot of other work done at Jackie Hollow, some curbing and paving repair work around the back driveway, as well as some fixing of the basketball hoops and basketball hoops by the tech ed room. At Font Hollow, we continued work that we started a number of years ago by replacing countertops and sinks that had really fallen into disrepair. And so we've been doing in-house, a lot of credit goes to Mike Samuelman, who's done this work for us. We do about nine of them per summer. I think we are at a point where hopefully next summer, we will have hit every classroom at Font Hollow. So, looking forward to that. We also installed a new window in the lobby. We had to reconfigure some space, make some room for some academic space, and had to move our armed school security office officer to the vestibule area. So now he has, you know, he has a line of sight to that area. It's kind of a running theme here with reconfiguring space. At Monroe Elementary, we added a wall in the library to create a new learning space for staff and students in there. The students restroom outside the, outside the gymnasiums were redone, and we did some work to a few troublesome exterior doors there that had given us problems at the end of the school year. And finally, Stepney, we added to the sidewalk near the gym, so if you have kids at Stepney, it elongated the drop-off area for parents. Once again, added a wall to create two new learning spaces there. And around Stepney, the perimeter of Stepney is, has asphalt around it, and we paved just about all of it. We just have the back of, the back of the building. We hope to finish that up next summer. So again, I just want to thank the entire staff for everything that they did. It was a lot of work. And that was just, that was just the highlights of what was done at each building. There was a lot more work than just that, but those were some of the bigger things. Kind of led us into our convocation, which was, which was really nice kickoff last Monday. We started a new tradition last year where I brought in the incoming seniors and the incoming kindergarteners, just to remind us why we're here and what we're doing, and it shows a nice progression that the kids have. We did the same thing this year. Matter of fact, I think both of our board reps were, participated with us. It was nice as we had our, we had our seniors share a special memory that they experienced in the Monroe Public Schools in their time here. So, I want to thank Dave, Jerry, and Dennis, and they were able to come here that day. And Dave did a nice greeting to the staff, as well as Ken Kellogg, and then Tony Scott and Kevin Kelly were also here to give state citations to our parent educator of the year and our teacher of the year. So, the two of them then gave some really inspiring comments to the, to the entire staff. And I will turn over the school updates in a second. I don't know if you guys have been playing rock, paper, scissors to see who goes first, but last Wednesday, we welcomed back 3,385 kids in district. I'll get you enrollment numbers October 1 when they become firm, but 3,385 students in district, that does not count the pre-K program. Pre-K, the preschool program just started today. So today, we had, I think it was an additional 69 students, so 3,454 students today in our district programs, you know, in our, in our pre-K through 12 programs. As a little comparison, there was 3,459, so there was five less kids, five more kids at the end of school last year than the start this year. But we know, we have talked about pre-K plenty, that number only goes up. And we have kids enrolling and some even still disenrolling, too. But the pre-K program will expand as the time goes on, so we'll definitely be above that number. We brought in 264 kindergarteners. There were about 240 graduating seniors last year. So, I will kick it off to, did anybody, did you guys, oh. Ashley has the, Ashley had the most fun in the first week.
Oh, they're all coming up. Here we go.
I need another chair.
I do want to, I do want to thank All-Star also. We, every year, you know, the year starts with, you know, making sure kids are here on time. It's like the biggest bane of our existence that the buses are running late. And by and large, for the first time, a lot of kids are ever riding a bus, especially our kindergarteners. They do a great job of getting kids, you know, to and from school on time. So, is someone starting? Okay.
I'm going to go alphabetical order.
So, hi, everyone. I'm excited to share that we welcomed almost 700 students at Font Hollow this fall. It's my largest student class ever, student body ever, and perhaps in the history of full day K, I don't know. But the first day was great. It was really special. All of the staff was on hand on the sidewalk, reading the kids as they came off the bus. Joe and Sheila was there. We had a bubble-making machine and lots of Mylar balloons on hand, just to kind of create this excitement and specialness around the first day. And it really was awesome. It was a lot of fun. Our students are doing a great job acclimating to the new school year and adjusting to the new learning expectations. I always love this time of year because the older students really take their kindergarten siblings or their kindergarten neighbors under their wing and make sure that they get on and off the bus safely and in and out of their classrooms all right. And they take such pride in that responsibility, and it's so wonderful to see. It's been only four days, but lots of kind and caring and responsible behavior, so 178 more to go. Our teachers did a wonderful job preparing their classrooms to receive students. I think all of them came in at least once over the summer and they were ready to go. PD days went very smoothly. We spent a lot of time talking about data, talking about culture and teamwork. And then, you know, maybe one other special thing for Font Hollow, I hired six new certified staff members. And this year, it's, it's really noticeable to me that they all are coming to Font Hollow with significant previous work experience, and I find that we are learning a lot from them. And it's nice to have them on the team. And, you know, it's been a great couple... And, you know, it's been a great couple of days. I did also wanna echo what Jo said. Thank you Sean Cornutt, my head custodian, and Dan Kropsec. The building looks fantastic. We really repurposed a couple of different spaces and made it much more workable. However, we are very tight on space at Font Hollow. I would say we're maxed out. I wish I had more spaces for the reading team and the special education team and the math interventionist. They are all sharing spaces right now. But, and we're a little slow with buses, but I think that's gonna get better in the next week. So, other than that, I'm ready. We're energized, we're excited. It's gonna be a great year.
Thank you. Kelly?
Hi everyone, welcome back. We also had a very positive opening to our school year at Monroe Elementary School. So much goes on behind the scenes. You know, some people are saying, "Well, what do you do all summer?" There's so much that goes on in the summer, and it's really the custodians, it's the tech department. They, you know, take out all the computers in the rooms, they put them all back in, they hook up everything again. And I'm just thankful for the secretaries and certainly for the educators giving their all their classrooms ready. So thank you to that. And I'll echo what Jo said about my head custodian too, Al Mozy and Dan Kropsec. We did a lot of great projects at Monroe Elementary, so I'm appreciative for all that support. I'm also thankful, we have, I have two shout-outs for you. One goes to Elite Stoneworks and one goes to Glacier Excavation because they work with our PTO to help us develop an outdoor classroom, which is coming along, and it looks super fabulous and the kids are so excited. We've already had a few classes go out there and use it. And thanks to you, all the BOE's support, we were able to open up each of our classrooms with flexible seating. So we made some orders. You supported that mission kind of with the budget last year, and so we were able to open up classrooms that had scoop rockers and fancy stools and wiggle seats and things that really helped make the classrooms certainly cozy and a better learning environment for our students. We added five new teachers to Monroe Elementary. I'm proud to say that they are, every single one is value-added for sure. I'm really excited about all of them. For the first time, we are fully staffed, and I'm not even kidding you, last year we were only fully staffed for 10 school days of the entire school year. So the fact that I already have four already is amazing to me. I'm super excited about that. I'm well my way to almost a whole year fully staffed. The PTO has planned a back-to-school bash for Thursday, so we're gonna have everyone out on the playground. Doesn't matter how hot it is, we're gonna have a good time. And our big goals this year at Monroe Elementary are small group data-driven instruction. So we've been talking about that for years. We're gonna continue talking about that. We always say progress over perfection, so we meet kids where they are and we move them forward. We're gonna continue to do that. And also, we're gonna be teaching explicitly about diversity. So Monroe Elementary always prides itself in being a community that is welcoming to everyone, and we are gonna make sure that everyone continues to feel that way at Monroe Elementary. So, that was our work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, one of my favorite things about working in Monroe is the teamwork with my colleagues. So a lot of the things that they just said, I'm gonna echo, which is, I mean, and I'd like to say you save the best for last over here, but you also, you also were able to highlight a lot of things we're doing across all three elementary schools. And we do try to work really closely to communicate and have similar goals. So, Stepney had a fabulous opening couple days. That was my motto when we came back for our faculty meeting, you know, be fabulous and take small manageable steps towards our goals this year, and we talked a lot about that. So even though at Stepney, we had a few unexpected surprises, I'm not sure if you heard, we were outside greeting kids, and right in the middle of our greeting, it started to downpour. Many adults went under, and I started to yell at Mike Crowley and Marissa. I'm like, "Let's go, get out here," you know, to get the kids in safely. But still, we all pulled together. They were a little wet. My feet were wet all day, but that was okay. There were lots of smiles. And then on day two, we had another unexpected surprise, a little oven incident in the cafeteria. I was sitting building schedules and the fire alarm went off on a Thursday. It was scheduled to practice on a Friday, and I'm like, "Who pulled it without me in the main office?" Needless to say, you know, we ran outside. First step was to get our K kids out, but it was a true team effort. And I don't think I could, you know, if you came to our building that day, it truly exemplified teamwork. Sheila was there before, I mean, once kids were out and accounted for. We started a new system when I came to Stepney of accountability for checking, you know, first we checked for displaced students, then we checked for displaced adults. And we've been doing that for the last year and a half, and I think our staff really became true believers in that emergency moment. So we counted within, you know, five minutes for all staff, and then the team started to come together. So before I could even call Sheila, she was in the driveway, you know, setting up lunches and we, you know, and a shout-out to our head custodian Rodney Perkins. As a former volunteer fireman, he really helped to contain the fire. So that was great. So that was an exciting couple of days, but all good. We welcomed 519 students to Stepney, 95 new kindergarteners, and Diane was busy all summer registering 20 new grade one for grade five students. We have 24 students that are multi-language learners, and we have 17 more that we are testing with our new multi-language learner teacher, Ashley Lopez. We had two new sections this year, and we maximized space as well, and six new certified staff, and lots of summer work that really made our building wonderful. Something that I was proud of during our PD was that we started learning walks, which is something that we I think wanna do as elementary school teachers, but we started them in our building. And teachers did learning walks around classroom environments to find new ideas. We sometimes are in our own space, we don't get to see outside, so they got to do that and really left compliments for their colleagues. And we always say in education that we steal without apology because great ideas come from each other. And then finally, we talked about ruler. We're gonna be rolling out our classroom charters, which is how you wanna feel within the building, to our students. And so we're doing that across all three elementary schools as well, so our teachers are working on that. And at Stepney, our book this year is Say Something. We did a great welcome-back video, and really it's, our voices are powerful and our voices can change the world, and that's our message this year. So, next steps are scheduling, 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 reflecting, and just continuing to put kids first. So if you wanna come visit, come see great things happening. Thank you.
Thank you all. Hold on a second. Dennis, can I ask you, the three of you a question? On behalf of the calendar committee, how are the half-days? Did it work out well?
Kindergarten appreciation.
They're getting two more. They're on the spot, sorry.
No, it's okay. I think that it was a nice, because sometimes we're planning for kids and we haven't, our teachers haven't met kids yet, so it was able, we were able to connect with kids and then spend the afternoon planning and talking about kids and getting, and then kind of doing that for those three days. I think it helped a lot with even special education scheduling, and it was really helpful.
Thanks. I heard some positive things about the transition for kids, especially the kindergarteners, who it's the first time, you know, it's over to go to have that transition from a half-day, you know, to a full day, then back to half-day tomorrow, but, you know, to have those half-days.
I've heard that teachers are just near.
The high school kids appreciated their afternoon naps that they were giving away.
Sure.
Thanks. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Do you have one?
Yes, yep.
Yep.
Hi everyone.
Hey Julia, how are you?
So, our fine faculty at Jacquey Hollow Middle School welcomed back 760 Lions between our two campuses. About two-thirds of our students are over at Fan Hill, and then about a third are here in this building at the STEM campus. We had 18 students new to district this summer, which was a drop from last summer, about a third less students. That was offset by 17 students who moved away. We have four new teachers this year. First week in classrooms, it was really inspiring to walk around and see teachers and students kind of together weaving our school culture. It is made fresh every year. You know, it's carried by the institutional knowledge of the people who are returning, but it's crafted by the people there in the room, fresh every fall. Lions' pride is safety, responsibility, and respect. And they created safety in routines, establishing, you know, safe ways to move in the hall, and emotional safety, taking turns talking, being a good group member. The routines of personal responsibility to be a successful student, and teachers establishing mutual respect with kids. Every instructional minute of the first week is purposeful to develop that school culture. And it kind of lays the groundwork for us now to have the academic cobwebs all shaken out, and we're ready to dive in and keep going. When I talked to the kids today, telling them I was coming here to let you know how it was going, they said to make sure to tell you that the new food people are doing pretty well. So that's a shout-out for Whitsons, because they have both a pizza and a burger option every day in addition to hot lunch, which is big news in middle school. So, wanted to make sure to share that. And with the heat this week, I think we're unique among the buildings, right? Having a second floor and a third floor. Those classrooms, we're so grateful for the additional window units we were able to install with the capital list last spring, so thank you for that. That's really tremendous. And I think it has gained us instructional minutes just with kids being able to focus and, you know, learning classrooms that are not 90 degrees plus. So thank you for that. That's a big help. We were able to do a lot of the classrooms on the second and third floor. That was excellent. The calf is still a little warm at the lunch hour, that's a big space, but kids have been able to eat outside in our tent that was purchased by the PTO last spring. And just a thank you to the outgoing PTO leadership. We had a big group of folks whose eighth graders went on to Masick, so we have new co-presidents for the PTO. That's Michelle Ruggiero and Donna Lane, who luckily had some volunteer board leadership experience to draw upon for her new role in the PTO. So we were grateful for that. Other than some second-floor lockers that got a little stubborn in the humidity and needed some old-fashioned encouragement from our amazing custodians, other than that, it was a pretty smooth start. We're real glad to be up and running.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
How we doing?
All right.
Good. So Masick, as the other schools, we've had a great start. You know, students and staff genuinely excited to be back, you know, and I know it because by 7:10, normally it's just the buses that you see, but on Wednesday last week, the parking lot, the student drivers, you know, they were here early. They were definitely ready to come back, which was great to see. So, you know, most, I don't think there were many tardies given out so far on day four, but, you know, that'll all change I'm sure tomorrow. Some genuine excitement in the building, you know, that's why we do what we do, because the kids, right? Four days in, the kids are genuinely excited to be there. We have, our focus for this year continues to be building connections with kids and, you know, trying to foster active learning in the classroom. You know, we have the block schedule, we wanna make sure kids are active during that time. You know, they have that attention span that lasts, you know, like seven, eight minutes, and you gotta kind of switch it up, and another seven, eight minutes and switch it up. So, what's been exciting for me to see as I sent out, I think after even just the first day, is going around and not seeing the, "Hey, by the way, here's my course syllabus, expectations, blah, blah, blah." But the teachers genuinely utilized our PD time to plan for kids to just kind of jump right in and play around with things, you know. I love the physics and they give them spaghetti, raw spaghetti and marshmallows, and see who can build the tall, get the marshmallow the highest, right? And build the structure out of spaghetti. And, you know, just to see that, you know, I'm so glad that Chris Overcash kept that going, because Peter Schmidt's been doing it, you know, forever. And it's just so exciting to see that stuff. And other teachers too, you know, again, not just that, "Oh, here's your syllabus, here's how your grade's gonna be," but really getting kids involved and kind of getting them, you know, setting the tone right from day one. So that's been real exciting to see. You know, so students, you know, they experience scavenger hunts, mini-competitions, goal-setting, a wide variety of just different ways to get acclimated to the classrooms, to the teachers, you know, and a lot of the kids, you know, either haven't had the teacher before, and again, really trying to make that connection within the classroom. Today, we had an assembly for all of the ninth-grade students. I know the reps mentioned the RISE program. That came out of some of the funding that you provided to Masick to write some curriculum over the summer, to institute a transition program to help our ninth-grade students transition more effectively to the high school. We had 12 teachers volunteer, well, they didn't volunteer, I guess they got paid, but they came in over the summer, which is still impressive, to come in and they wrote the whole curriculum in like a day. So every Friday, the ninth-grade students will be meeting with a staff member who also volunteered to be part of that. They generally teach mostly freshmen, and so it's gonna build a strong connection for all the ninth graders as they go through the school year. So we're looking forward to the impact that'll have. We did have about 70 Masick faculty and staff go to a barbecue on Thursday afternoon. Just a great time of just, you know, connecting again as a staff. We, obviously the kids mentioned, you know, the full slate of athletic contests that start this week, over the weekend and/or early next week. Tomorrow, we have grilling for the grads, probably also going to have sweating with the oldies as Mr. Lowell and I grill. But we'll try not to sweat onto the hot dogs and hamburgers. But the Masick PTC, again, has been a huge part of sponsoring that event, so we're looking forward to having that tomorrow. We did, I don't know if this is just, you know, dumb luck, but we did order a dunk tank for tomorrow, and I tell you what, right when I'm done grilling, I'm going up there, and if the kid doesn't hit the spot, I'm gonna tell him to run up there and push it. And we do have our back-to-school night tomorrow night, so we're looking forward to that as well. So, thanks again, but a great start so far at Masick.
Good, thank you.
Thanks Steve.
Thanks.
Last thing is just beginning of our special education updates from Jen.
Hi everyone.
Hi Jen.
So we two were very busy in special ed over the summer. We welcomed 143 students to our ESMI program, Expend School Year Services. We were here, which was really nice. We used the STEM wings, we had pre-K through 12, all students in the building, and our special education teachers were great, our related service staff was wonderful, and our kids were as well. So, it was a nice July. And in August, Marissa Cindy and I were very busy getting ready for students to come back, working on schedules, so we had a good start to the year as well. Transportation went really well, which can be a problem sometimes, but it's a good thing. So, if you're looking at enrollment, if you look in your package, you can see that we ended the school year with 589 students. Within those 589, we graduated 25 students, so we ended, ended last year with 564 students. July was pretty quiet in regards to students moving in, but we, in August, we had some movement. So we had four students that registered into the town, and we had five students who moved out of district. But then we also had four students who were made eligible for services with some testing that we did, and actually they were all pre-K students. So we, right now, at this moment, are at 567, that is our current enrollment. Questions about enrollment? Okay, just looking at our financials, there's really not much to see at the moment. There's very little activity. We are currently just receiving our contracts for students who are out of district. We're looking at transportation contracts, and we're encumbering those in related service agencies as well. So you'll see more movement in the next few months on that.
You encumbered a lot, correct?
We aren't.
You encumbered a lot, yeah.
We will be, yes. We started, we will be, yes.
Yeah.
Questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. We're gonna move to unfinished business, which we have none, so we're gonna move to new business. Joe, can you and Ron talk about the budget transfers, please?
Sure. I'll give it first pass, and Ron, just identify, basically this is just trying to true-up our fiscal year '23 budget. So it's taking money from the electricity account and then divvying it out across a number of things. The biggest one there being building repairs, and that was primarily from the septic issue and the overrun with that. There was also some additional legal stuff that we had closed a purchase order too early and had to reopen it.
Yeah, the other thing on the, was additional tree work.
Oh yes, I'm sorry, thanks Ron.
Yeah, so there was additional tree work in that, along with the Masick septic, were the big drivers of that.
Yeah. That's all, they got those repaired?
Yes.
Septics.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was a big job.
Well, that was, you know, they opened the ground up and it turned into a bigger project than anticipated.
Right. Okay, but all the transfers, from what I recall, are zeroed out now, right?
Yes. So last meeting, if you recall, I, it was kind of a first pass, this is kind of a refined, you know, because there are, we are still closing out POs for '23.
Right, right.
Right now, the, the surplus stands at 590.
Okay.
There's still 398,000 in, in open purchase orders, which, over the next week or two, we're waiting on invoices, and, and a lot of it was related to the summer work. It was encumbered as of June 30th, but.
Okay. Board of Finance next Thursday?
Board of Finance is two Thursdays.
Two more, okay. And they could potentially review our letter, right? So, yep.
It was, it was discussed, and they'll be doing the, they'll be looking to do the town-side transfers.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, yep. We did send that letter asking for those specific projects to be covered with the surplus, so feedback from the board was positive, so we're, we're looking forward to that. So any questions to Jo or Ron about that?
Will it be an item on the agenda for that finance meeting?
It, it should be. I would anticipate that.
Jerry?
An unrelated matter, could I ask Jo something? My phone is exploding, Superintendent Cobbza, explain to me about the half-days, they're not for teachers, just for students?
Yes.
Could you explain that, please? Because my phone is exploding.
So we have, to make sure we have equity, because MASIC already has a half-day tomorrow. We've asked, we, we are releasing early for the, for the students, and to keep everybody on the same, at the same level right now. We have the teachers working full days in air-conditioned spaces, so they, we encourage them to find air-conditioned spaces.
I can understand that, I'm just going to ask in the future that we rethink that. We know how hot it gets, and if we're asking the students, if we're telling the students it's too hot, and our local districts around us are letting the faculty go.
Not all of them.
Not all, but I did a search as my phone was blowing up, and there were some that I would just like you to reconsider. I, I, was the MEA involved in this? I'm bringing up things, I don't know if I should or shouldn't?
We actually, I sent that email out right before this meeting.
Well, I didn't get it, that's why.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I sent that, I sent that email out to the staff right before this meeting, after speaking with Ralph and Sue.
Okay. I'm sorry to bring this up, Jo.
I spoke to them first.
I don't have a choice when my phone explodes, I, I have to play and.
Are there enough air-conditioned spaces for the teachers to go to?
Yes.
That's the question.
So, thank you.
And we're continuing to look at Jockey Hollow specifically with, with capital projects, and we're not ending with just the, you know, the window units.
But, but not the money, and it was answered. There will be air-conditioned space for the teachers who are coming in, they're not going to hot classrooms.
Correct.
Thank you.
If they want to go to air-conditioned, find air-conditioned space.
Thank you.
But yeah, we did have that conversation before, Jen.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the budget transfers as, as presented? Jerry, seconded by Dennis, any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn from Jerry?
Hang on one second before we go, because I, I think, you know, obviously with everything that happened tonight, but I, I know that there is some detail that obviously we wouldn't share. But there is a lack of information that's obviously causing frustration to cause that many people to come, you could sense the emotion. What is the communication, communication strategy to deliver the, the information that we can deliver?